Good evening, everybody. It is Tuesday, September 12th, twenty twenty-three at seven P. M. We are here at Lee Middle and High School. We are continuing to be in a virtual meeting room for Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the Okafield C thirty A section twenty. This meeting will take place in every fashion, both virtually via Zoom or in person for those committee members and attendees choosing to access it either way. Calling this meeting to order pursuant to Hushon Law C thirty A section twenty, I am hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance that will be led by the elementary. Thank you, everyone. Okay, the mission statement of Lee Public Schools is to ensure students have the opportunity to develop the skills of civil and critical thinking skills to thrive in an ever-changing world. Brenda, can you do a roll call for us, please? Mr. Robin?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Ms. Fisher?
Here.
Ms. Langmore?
Here.
Ms. Larmen?
Here.
Mr. Nichols?
Here.
Ms. Strickler?
Here.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have the approval of the August eighth, twenty twenty-three Lee School Committee Minute. Entertaining motion. Motion to approve the minutes of the Lee School Committee meeting from August eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing that, Brenda, can you give us a roll call? Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yeah.
Ms. Fisher?
Abstain.
Ms. Langmore?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yeah.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Abstain.
Next up, we have public input.
Residents of Lee are invited to address the committee regarding items on this evening's agenda at this time. Issues raised will normally be referred to the administration or a subcommittee of the school year.
Do you have anybody?
Mr. Hall?
Adam Chik.
All right. Next up, we have our reports, and our first report will be from our new student representative, Annie Kent. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Um, so, the beginning of this academic year has been smooth and promising. As a school, uh, we are building a community based on kindness and respect. Um, the class of twenty twenty-four and other clubs are actively participating on upcoming fundraisers at Taste of Free set for Friday, the fifteenth. This event will allow students to engage with the community, raise funds, and develop valuable skills in fundraising, community outreach. Other clubs and classes are also actively doing fundraisers. Uh, the class of twenty twenty-five will be having an event, a gathering event on Monday night. Um, also, a significant upcoming event is the Founder's Day Parade, uh, scheduled for Saturday, the sixteenth. Students of our middle school and high school band are actively preparing to participate. The band has also hosted their drum camp where new members can learn marching bands music and interact with upperclassmen. Uh, the pet band is also preparing for upcoming football games to showcase our school spirit. Uh, our school's sport programs and extracurricular clubs have been resumed. Uh, students are actively participating in various sports competitions, including basketball, soccer, volleyball, golf, and cross country. Furthermore, our clubs are starting to move it up again, uh, offering students a chance to pursue their passion and interest outside the classroom. Uh, Shandarma will also be hosting a post-school event on September twenty-first to celebrate, um, International Peace Day. A speech will be given on that day of the event. Chorus chorus was, um, also be sang to commemorate the event. High school, um, Shandport.
Awesome. Thank you. Do they have a question for Annie? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You are welcome to throw it if you can. Okay. Next up, we have our superintendent's update. Welcome, regards.
Yeah. Oh, thank you. I appreciate that, Annie. Thank you. Great report. Quite outstanding. Very well done. Um, we'll try to be brief, but I I came across this today on on social media, this this quote, and I really thought it it resonated well uh, with where we are as a district and maybe where we want to go. And uh, it's from Alvin Toffler, who was a a futurist, and it's the that reads that "The illiterate of the twenty-first century will not be those who cannot read and write, but those who cannot learn, unlearn, and relearn." And I think when we talk about, I'll transition nicely to the priorities for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Um, I think that those qualities in our students are highlighted, uh, and woven between those four priorities, specifically around student-centered classrooms, uh, the acquisition and implementation of high-quality instructional materials, building relationships, and then diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging to ensure that all of our students and our staff uh, feel like, uh, the Lee Public Schools are a family. Uh, but the ability for our students to critically think, to analyze, to question, to ask why, uh, and to be willing to change uh, course and direction based on things that they learn is is critically important, and I want to thank all the staff uh, for the work that they have already done in these first couple of weeks of school and for the work that they did uh, at the beginning in our professional development days, uh, to make sure that they were well-prepared to greet our students, uh, with open arms on the first day of school. Speaking of the opening of school, uh, again, students and staff are fully engaged. Uh, tomorrow night and Thursday night, we have open houses taking place at Lee Elementary School and Lee Middle and High School respectively. Uh, I have kept you up to speed on uh, on our grant applications. We are still waiting uh, for the IVAQ grant to reopen. You'll recall that we appropriated a hundred thousand dollars uh, for that work. Uh, that work is being done, uh, by CTC. We're just waiting for the grant, uh, to reopen. We can, uh, take, uh, appropriate steps for the funding, and we are waiting uh, word from the, uh, one-eighty-five continuation grant. That's the math, high-quality instructional materials, uh, continuation grant. We expect to hear, uh, the results of that grant application, uh, by the end of this week or early next week. There is some protective fence being installed around the fitness court. Uh, that's that work started uh, yesterday, uh, was almost completed today. We're just waiting on a gate. Uh, the purpose is not to keep people out, uh, but to allow those people who are age-appropriate in. Uh, and so, uh, the the court was designed, uh, for, uh, individuals aged fourteen and older. Uh, and so we know that the placement of that fitness court is such that, uh, it will be attractive, uh, to youngsters um, leaving the elementary school, attending football games and the like. Uh, and so, in collaboration with the town, we thought that it was appropriate, uh, while while the intention was for it to be an open space, uh, for us to take some proactive steps to make sure that we keep people safe when they're using it, uh, and that we can closely monitor it. So the goal, they that court will be open, uh, almost all the time. It will be locked on select occasions, uh, including when inclement weather comes where uh, snow or ice, and you wouldn't want people, uh, climbing on those, um, on that facility. We want to make sure that they are, uh, they're being kept safe. And the last point on here, and it lends itself well to, um, to our our student reps who who led us in the pledge this evening is beginning next month, we're going to, uh, have a student-centered presentation at each school committee meeting. Uh, we'll alternate between schools. Uh, we'll start next month, uh, with students from LMHS, but the idea is to to get students in front of you as a school committee, uh, so that you can hear from them, see them, talk to them, uh, and get a sample and an idea about what is it they're working on in classes, uh, so that their educational experience is real to you. Uh, so I think that that's going to be an important step, and I appreciate the committee, um, supporting us, uh, adding that component to our school committee meetings moving forward. I will not expect them, uh, to come to the July or August meetings, uh, but uh, starting, starting in October, uh, we welcome them. I'm not moving. There we go. Uh, enrollment. Uh, our students are our most important asset, and our enrollment as of, uh, two weeks ago, uh, is is six-hundred-and-twenty-nine total students. Again, you see us having a hundred and forty-two choice in forty-six tuition students coming in. Uh, we continue to be very mindful of uh, our enrollment status at each grade level, and you will see that there are still some class sizes uh, that are a bit concerning to us, but we continue to, uh, encourage and welcome, um, families who are coming to town uh, as well as those who are interested in pursuing school choice, uh, so that we can try to bolster those numbers, uh, while school choice is closed for this year. Uh, we are, uh, continuing as we have been, at least since I got here and I'm sure before I got here, uh, to examine ways where we can make the Lee Public Schools more attractive, uh, to families from surrounding communities, uh, so that they can avail themselves of the great educational opportunities here in Lee. Uh, we do have open positions, uh, that remain, uh, to be filled, and this is, uh, difficult for us, uh, but it's not extraordinary to the Lee Public Schools. As I've mentioned to you before, this is a, uh, current dilemma that uh, districts all across the country are facing. Uh, we are looking for paraprofessionals to service eleventh and twelfth grade and as well as ninth and tenth. Uh, we need a one-to-one developmental program, uh, in the fifth grade, and then we need a K to two paraprofessional. Uh, I think that those needs may continue to increase as, um, students, um, settle in and, uh, get acclimated, as well as those who are new to the district, um, as they find their ways, and we determine whether their, uh, their needs are able to be met with the services that are in place. But uh, if anyone on this committee, uh, in this room or that's viewing at home, uh, or if you know anybody who's interested in coming to work for the Lee Public Schools, we do have open positions, and we welcome qualified applicants. Some important points for, uh, everyone at home and in this room to consider. I mentioned the open houses already. Uh, September twenty-third, we will be hosting a Charting the Course with MASC. Uh, Liz LaFond, who many of you are are very familiar with, will be leading, uh, that Charting the Course, uh, here on Saturday, September twenty-third. Uh, we are hosting a flu clinic, uh, at Lee Middle and High School on September twenty-eighth from three to six P. M. Uh, we believe that, uh, COVID boosters may be available at that, uh, flu clinic as well. So if anybody's interested, uh, in attending, they are certainly welcome to do that. Uh, Lee Elementary School has asked me to make sure that everyone is aware of our walk-to-school events. Uh, those are set for October fourth, uh, November fourteenth, December sixth, March sixth, April third, and May first. Uh, they especially want to make sure that school committee members know that they are invited to participate if they are, uh, if they are able. We've got an NHS induction ceremony that will be coming up, uh, probably sometime in October. Uh, that date and time is yet to be determined, uh, but I will let you know when that is finalized. And then parent-teacher conferences are scheduled for November ninth, which leads me to uh, something I need to make the committee aware of. When we approved the calendar, uh, for this coming year, uh, there was a clerical error, and we neglected to note that November ninth should be by contract a half-day of school, uh, for students. Um, because it, again, it's contractual obligation, so, but that on the calendar that appears it was distributed did not reflect that, um, with the committee's approval. Uh, again, that's a clerical error on our end. Um, if we can make that adjustment to the calendar, we will repost, uh, and redistribute, um, beginning tomorrow. Uh, but again, that's something that is contractual and has been the case, uh, for years. Look ahead to our next meeting. Uh, it's going to be a busy one. Uh, while tonight may be short, I don't want to curse us. Uh, next month, I know we should, uh, be prepared. Make sure you eat a good dinner before you come. Uh, we've got a lot of things that we need to tackle, uh, especially around MCAS accountability. Um, because next Tuesday, those data will become publicly available. Uh, my office, um, as well as the principals will have access to those data, uh, Thursday of this week. Uh, but we can't share that information, uh, until next, uh, next Tuesday at noon time, uh, but we will use the time between uh, Thursday and the, um, I guess, what is it, the tenth of, uh, of October to get our, um, presentations in order, to make sure that we've got a comprehensive, uh, presentation for you, uh, examining where our areas of success are and where any areas, uh, of need exist. And we'll, of course, we'll also have a student-centered presentation, uh, from LMHS. And that, um, is what I have for you this evening.
Do you want, do you want, like, do you want a motion from us to approve the changes?
I don't have a question, just a comment. I love adding the student presentations to the meeting. I can't wait. Great idea. Whoever came up with this.
We look forward to it. It's going to be great.
And they also could learn about it too when they present it. So, I'm excited, you know, I look forward to it.
It's a nice, it'll be a nice addition to the meeting. We will, if, uh, if, you know, my, Ms. Larmen, I I would suggest that we put that at the beginning of the meeting so that, uh,
yeah.
Similar to to Annie, if you don't want to stay, you don't need to stay, but you know.
Well, I'm excited about staying. Good meeting. She's gonna be like, I got homework. All right. Next up, we've got principals and directors' reports. First up, we've got Tim Ruckup from Lee Elementary School.
Hello. Uh, this year at LES, we're off to a great start with students and families definitely getting back into the rhythm of school. Uh, club will be starting up in the coming weeks, and I feel walk to school, I sleep in time, which I'm sure I'm a little too, it will take place on the fourth. Hope to see some of you there. Uh, the schedule changes that we made for the school year are working well so far. Uh, being the third weekend, I was anxious over the summer with some of those changes, but they seem to be working really well. Uh, we made those changes to better meet the developmental needs of students. I'm really excited that it's working out. Uh, we have a fire safety assembly for students coming up at the beginning of October for grades K to two, working in conjunction with the Lee Fire Department. Our ASOS grant, which is that grant that pays for summer programming, was extended to next summer, which I'm very excited about, about thirty-two thousand dollars to provide awesome programming. I could do some work with, uh, the school council, and some of that grant can be used for some before and after-school programming. So we're going to look to see if we can use a percentage of that to try to bring some before and after-schools, uh, programming to LES, but also not compromise our summer program. So that will be ongoing. I'll certainly keep you updated as we go with that. Uh, the implementation of inter-reading in grades K to five and inter-literature in grade six seems to be going really well so far. Brand-new series, very exciting. Uh, there are some, you know, hiccups here and there in terms of, you know, working with HMH and being able to, um, get the materials needed, um, because they've had some hiccups on their end in terms of website and, uh, online support, but we seem to be getting through pretty well. I'm very excited that we're able to implement that this year. Uh, picture day was yesterday, and for those who've never seen kindergartners line up, getting ready to take their picture, uh, it's quite a sight. Uh, it went pretty smoothly, and I'm pretty thankful we've got that behind us. Uh, open house at LES, as Superintendent Richard said, is, uh, tomorrow, September thirteenth from five-thirty to seven. Looking forward to seeing, uh, you know, families go and get to meet families and have them check out their new classrooms and have teachers introduce themselves. It's always a pretty exciting activity. Looking forward to that. And again, we're off to a great start, and I'm just really excited to see, uh, where we're headed.
Okay. Do you have any questions for them?
Just a tiny one. I was just curious about what the schedule changes were.
So what we did, um, in the past, we had some of the younger grades have their specials in the morning. So in the afternoon, they had some academic blocks, and what we found was the kids are pretty tired and pretty by then. So we flip-flopped it where the older students, like four, five, and six, they have their specials in the morning because they're more flexible in the afternoon. And then, uh, the younger grades, who are in two, have their specialty in the afternoon. And we're seeing some positives, um, you know, uh, from positives from that, which is good, uh, because those academic blocks have been in the morning. Uh, we also flip-flopped lunch and recess because what we found is students were rushing to finish eating in order to not miss a second of recess. And some of the recess times we get cut if, uh, a student was trying to finish eating. So by flip-flopping it to get that full twenty minutes, and then they get a nice, you know, chunk of time to be able to eat their lunch. Uh, they don't miss a second of that recess. They seem to be more hungry at that point. Uh, and it also allows us to have some of our student support team members kind of float around to provide support for lunch, to be able to work through any peer-related issues that are occurring during recess, which is a relatively unstructured time compared to the rest of the day. Because the other thing we found is students would go to their teachers and just go through the list of what happened at recess right at the start of class. So this allows our student support team to be able to, again, use that lunchtime to try to do some of that restorative type thing and to be able to go and work with students closely to try to minimize any disruption at the beginning of class. Uh, we also, uh, with the implementation of HMH, uh, inter-reading and inter-literature, we were able to revamp our RTI that we, how we use our interventionals for RTI. Uh, so we were able to get, uh, our interventionists into more grades to see more students, which was great. Uh, and that's an ongoing thing. As needs bubble up in certain grades, we're trying to best utilize support staff uh, to be able to meet those needs. So those are really the 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 major ones. I mean, in some ways, it seems minor, but anybody that's ever worked with an elementary school schedule knows it was quite a bit that we bit off. But again, it seems to be going really well, and I couldn't be happier because that was definitely one of my bigger anxieties this summer, thinking about the start of school, is is this experiment going to work? And then again, the hope is to just keep evolving and to be able to go and, you know, improve as we go.
Pretty, pretty impressive schedule, too. But that's, that, like, I mean, I got Alex and her little kids in school. Good job.
Yeah, I'll give the faculty a lot of credit, too, for submitting our our faculty time all working together because there's a lot of tails that wag the dog in terms of, you know, L. S. F. interventions, all of that. So there was a lot of wants there, but again, I give the faculty and staff a lot of credit for really pulling this off and making it happen.
Great job.
Could you add something, maybe quarterly or every couple of months, just to update on how that's going? I don't know how to measure that, but.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Without a phone. All right. Next up, we have words for Annie, if you know.
Thank you. Um, we also had a great opening to the new school year with lots of excitement and energy from both staff and students. As Annie stated, um, athletics began in late August, including our new co-op team for boys soccer with Lennox. Um, we have several students taking advantage of that opportunity and thrilled to be able to bring back soccer for our boys after many years of not having it available to them. So thanks to Lennox for agreeing to be our partner in that cooperative team. The Shakespeare Program will also be starting up soon. Candace Killian, our faculty liaison with Shakespeare and Company, and I are meeting this Friday with the directors uh, to finalize details, but we expect auditions will happen next week. Um, and as always, the, uh, in-house performances will be, um, Veterans Day weekend. Um, and the following week will be the actual festival performances, as we've planned. Other clubs have also begun meeting, including the DSA Social Justice Club, Student Government, and others. Sign-ups are in process for mock trial in the quiz team, as well as for the district robotics team that goes through grade eight. I'm also very excited to, um, announce that we're beginning a new high school-level robotics program this year, um, with a great deal of student interest in that. Um, that should be really, really cool, uh, to get that going. Um, and as always, as Annie said, the bands have been busy preparing for the Founder's Day parade this coming weekend. We have a record number of students enrolled in college credit-granting, uh, courses this year. For first semester, there are a hundred and sixty-seven enrollments in college-level courses. Now, obviously, there's duplicates there, right? Uh, on a school of our size, there's no way there's, it's not a hundred and sixty-seven students, it's a hundred and sixty-seven enrollments. Um, that does not include college courses that will run second semester. So by the end of the year, I would expect that number to be getting close to two hundred, um, enrollments for college grant, crowd credit granting courses. So this does include our AP courses, our concurrent enrollment courses taught at LMHS, plus students taking advantage of opportunities directly with BCC, MCLA, and Harvard. Um, it's really intriguing. Uh, BCC is this year allowing, um, seniors to take an unlimited number of credits um, for the first time. For years, it's been limited to one class per semester, uh, but is now an unlimited number of, uh, courses. Um, the vape detectors that were purchased last spring by, um, special action of the school committee have been installed and are operating. And we're already seeing, um, an improvement in the, for lack of better word, climate in the bathrooms, um, particularly in the boys', um, bathrooms and bathrooms. Uh, there's nothing more to do, including further education around, um, the ills of vaping for our student body, um, but so far, so good. Yesterday, we observed the National Moment of Silence for the twenty-second anniversary of the September eleventh attacks. Um, and Al Leba, who's a freshman this year and last year was our representative for Project Three Fifty-One, led the moment of silence. Uh, I will mention that at the open house this Thursday, which begins at six o'clock P. M., all parents and guardians are welcome to attend. Uh, we will print schedules for you that evening, um, Thursday evening, if you need a copy of it. At seven o'clock that evening, Josh Hall will be hosting an informational session about the upcoming Washington DC trip, which is planned for next, um, April vacation. The Peer Mediation Group has a team-building field trip planned for the near future, as well as, uh, an annual middle school hike at, um, Bear Town Mountain coming up very soon. Um, and juniors and seniors who are eligible for the National Honor Society have received their invitations to join, and the induction ceremony will be held on Lastly, a warm welcome goes out to Marcelo Del Rey, um, our first exchange student in many, many years here at LMHS. Marcelo hails from Naples and will be with us for the full year as a member of the class of twenty twenty-four, and he'll graduate with the class. In June. Thank you.
Next up, we have Dan Norton of Special Education.
Hello. Um, I am going to be sending out a survey to all of the parents with students that may have disabilities um, within the the Lee Public Schools community. Um, and in that, we're trying to pinpoint a date and a time where we can do a basics rights seminar, um, which is about the basic rights for special education, and we're going to be focusing on evaluation and eligibility, um, which we do every year. Sometimes we do slightly different topics. And the other thing that we're going to be sending some information about is, um, our CPAC, our Special Education Parent Advisory Committee. We haven't had one in a few years, and with COVID, the interest was not there. So I'm hoping that with this survey, we will find a number of parents that are, um, again, able to and interested in becoming a part of that, and we could have the Federation for Professional Needs come in and do some training around that because it will require some parents to take some leadership roles. Um, and then that organization could, um, absolutely give you guys updates monthly um, or several times a year, as you would determine you'd like. Um, so far, the year is going really well. We have our new staff. They're getting to know the students. Um, and we've made some schedule changes. The principals have been really great about that and um, making sure that the students are getting their services. We've been able to hire a second speech pathologist. Um, she will start in a couple of weeks, which is wonderful news. So we have all of our professional staff, but we do still have, um, like Mr. Richard said, some openings for paraprofessionals. Now, if there's anybody that you know that would like to, whether it's sub or working in the elementary or in the middle high school, please have them contact my office. All I have right now.
Hey, do you have some questions again about, uh, pair shortage? How many pairs have you shared?
This is today, four.
Four. How long we? My memory, my memory is perfect. We've been, we've been short pairs for a very long time. How can the committee help you fill these positions?
We've moved our advertising to everywhere possible. Um, we're using Indeed. We're on School Spring. We're every avenue that we have, um, we are doing that word-of-mouth, I think, has been one of our best um, ways. People are, I I had someone come in and apply to today, who's actually a former graduate from Lee Middle High School, and a friend of hers already works here, and she's like, oh, my best friend's here. She said, it's great. Um, so I think just getting that word out there, like, this is a big community to work in, and that we have some fabulous kids to work with, um, would be great. The problem is, the numbers are rising, and so even though we may have filled the spots we had in the past, we get new new students or, um, different needs come up, and so that's the 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 challenge.
Right. Is there any way that we can fill these positions other than hiring? I mean, is is there a contact that's available? I mean, is there anything that we can do? You know, I I I feel that not having a pair for a single grade is a disservice to the kids in the grade that need that. Is a disservice to the kids in the grade that need that, that support, you know? So I guess my, my belief and my opinion is that whatever your department needs to fill up positions. Uh, we need to help fulfill those ID's and those contracts that we have with families and students.
So we are actually contracting one of our pair professionals. We have a student that is in another school district under a tuition agreement. Um, and I really needed to make sure that we had a solid staff to go. And so we, we were able to hire. Um, a registered behavior technician through one of these companies. It's cost prohibitive for us to, to hire four more. It would be upwards of two hundred thousand dollars. So that's why. We haven't explored that yet, although it's definitely something that could get you more information.
I think I, I mean, I, I probably preaching the choir on this, but I'd like to put a period on our pair shortage. I know, I know.
I'm with you.
I've had, you've had an open job for eighteen months at my work and despite all the things we got going, we still can't find the money. So I, I recognize if there is a worker shortage, I get it. But putting a period on that pair shortage is important.
I think, I think the administration agrees. Uh, we're not, we're not.
I know, I, I know, I know we're not, I know we're not.
Do the, do the pair here, um, get paid different to be a regular at the pair and a special pair?
The, the, there are differentials that can be paid based on, uh. Assignments of, of duties, but I will tell you that the super majority. Of the pair professionals, uh, that we employ get the differential. It's a very small number of, of pair professionals who do not. And in the last contract negotiation, we tried to, uh, remove that obstacle, uh, but that wasn't. Um, met with agreement by the eligible.
How, how is our pair of paying compared to our neighbors and?
We're in the lower half.
We're in the lower half.
But I will say that we made substantial gains in this past contract round compared to where we were previously.
Right, I, 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 I remember that, that was a big, very well.
But our greatest competitor, quite frankly, if I could, my gr- our greatest competitor are fast food restaurants, uh, uh, in Big Y, name it. Um, uh, there are other, other opportunities for people, um, that, that make more competitive salaries.
When you reached out, I'm just curious, when you reached out, like, MCLA or, like, um. Williams College or even BCC for anyone who's interested in education, if they see, you know, pair to start. As stepping forward, if you want what the kids, you want to come to teacher, or if you're going to do a teaching program.
Yes, yes, we have open lines of communication with both BCC and MCLA, not Williams College, um. I can't imagine anybody at Williams College, uh, who their end game is to be a pair professional. Maybe I'm wrong, but, uh, I think we have a stronger opportunity with MCLA and BCC and we do communicate regularly with them. We have directed some of our existing pair professionals to them, uh, to get into a teacher pipeline so that they can take courses to get their way towards. Uh, being certified teachers, uh, but again, the, um, the opportunities, uh, are little and, and a, 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 a college student. Um, is less likely to come work for us, you know, eight to two thirty. Uh, than they would, and they're, I needing to take classes at night than they would be to. Take classes by day and pick up a part-time job at night. So there's a real struggle there, but that's a, it's a great question, Ms. Robin.
Yeah, that's, that's terrible.
Other questions for Dan?
Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, we have received all of our occupancy permits, uh, and zero deficiencies on the building, both schools. Uh, so there's many forms of correction. Uh, it's three months almost to the date since we ordered both of the vehicles, the van and the truck. Um, I have received word from MHQ that there's no great news on the truck, but there's no bad news. Um, and the good news is that our order is still viable in the system and it's just, we're waiting to hear back from national van builders. Uh, with an update on where the van is at, um, but I have not heard back from him as of yet. I did only reach out to him, uh, yesterday. Um, as Mike stated, the LMHS exercise escape, uh, had its fencing and post set and erected. We're just waiting on the gate to be. Uh, manufactured, uh, with customish, uh, to fit the gate on. That'll be going in on Thursday. Um, the LDS building management system has received all its upgrades. However, also like, uh, the superintendent was saying, we're waiting to H, uh. HVI.
IVAQ.
I, thank you, IVAQ funding. Um, CTC still has the controls, has the whole building up and running. And once, you know, they're paid for the work that they've already provided, they will then relinquish keys of control over to these schools. And then from that point, we'll work on doing the same for LMHS to get them into their model, all the technologies that they need. Um, the buildings were turned over the summer by, uh, maintenance and the custodians. I think they did a great job. There was no areas missed. Um, there was no flooring mist, um. The grounds are no different, they're in great shape. Um, a little fun note, I had a turf tank. Representative come out and it's actually a robot that drove around on our field, GPS guided, did the whole field beautifully and saved our guys. Do all the layout. Uh, investing in machine is, uh, it's not physically responsible for us, but, uh. Nonetheless, it was nice to see the technology come out and do kind of some work for us. Um, the front of the high school received a little beautification, um, the steel is been painted to match the steel that was. Supposedly painted up at elementary school, just trying to bring a little bit of curve appeal to the district as a whole. Um, there's some fencing work that I would like to do, I was speaking with Mr. Ganty about, uh, about removing some kind of. Not some kind of, removing the fencing that runs in a few different directions out of a few different materials. Pulling all of that I saw stuff up and then just setting my stone, just stone it's local for the neighborhood, make it really pretty. I think it'll be great. Uh, LES kitchens received a gas linkage upgrade. Um, there were some tie-ins from their gas lines, so their stoves that were not compliant. Uh, over the summer, we had all that worked on, both schools, all of their gas connection fronts are now compliant. Uh, the tennis court wall, practice wall, uh, is being taken down and redone. Um, I'm hoping to have that done in the next couple of months. Corey, the woodshop teacher is kind of spearheading that. Um, and then hopefully throughout the season, uh, we're, I'm. Thinking we can get, uh, some attention paid made to dugouts, uh, maybe the ghosts painted up and get, uh. Paul printed or something, but again, just to increase the beautification of the whole. School district, um, because again, when the open houses count and the parents count, you know, it's really, I think, I think important, you know, the eyes tend to be. A lot before anything else and if they see a nice, pretty, well-maintained, um, and, you know, just good looking school, it, it helps. Um, outside of that, I'm wrapping up some OSHA trainings and such and continuing through professional education and. And that the system's here are running great, the school's great.
Anything coming down the road that we should be starting to think about now?
I think that, that the committee, the committee's, uh, aware of, uh, certainly future capital projects. The town is also. Uh, aware of those projects. Those include, but are not limited to, uh, new roofs that on both schools. Uh, paving needs, um, at both schools, uh. You know, o- other general infrastructure type, uh, things that, that are gonna happen, but, uh, those are two of the big money. Um, issues that, that the town and the school department will need to, uh, be prepared for. In the not-too-distant future, we will start to consider engaging with MSBA. Um, for, uh, especially for funding for, uh, the roof projects, uh, but. Uh, that's not an immediate need, but it's not, it's not too far in the, in the future either.
Yeah, that encompasses a, a few different things too, from the roofs to rooftop mechanical, sort of building management systems on the roofs. Uh, drainage. Yeah, leaks, uh, I've been documenting and, and deciphering, you know, what is pipe leak, what is roof leak and then. Compiling all that information, going to do larger fundings and whatnot, and demonstrate that the roof's twenty years old, past their life expectancy, et cetera, et cetera. On the roads are, are similar, uh, when the roads get done, you know, that's when we'll have adjustments to water flow paths, which, which right now are. Are, are not connecting to the basins and the drains. Um, I think there was a count of fourteen drains. At LMHS, uh, uh, excuse me, LES, only two were actually catching water, uh. That was diverted to them, not, that just fell into the grate from the heaven. So there's, there's gonna be a, a, a substantial job to do here when it comes to the roads and roofs. Um, but all that'll be corrected and, and. You know, but there's always, there's, there are always projects. There's always something.
Uh, yeah, just the heat wave we had last weekend, just curious how the school's held up and how classrooms were and, and everything else.
Sure, so not all of the school is a hundred percent air conditioning, only specific areas. Um, LES did crash just before school got out. Um, they had to suffer a little bit of ills and summer. Sort of came upon us, but ultimately CTC did get in there. They did manage to. Kind of keep it going while they were rebuilding anew. Uh, for down here, it, it was a little bit more of a struggle. The systems down here are, are, are limping along. CTC is keeping going. But for the most part, they're, they're, they're hard to control down here. Up there, it's, it's smooth sailing. We just need to wait for the transfer of control when they're paid. Um, but yeah, it's, it's a constant battle. Uh, you know, even tonight, you know, for example, while y'all were here, it got a little warm and. Mr. Rashard has returned the air on and manually forced that on, force it off and it's noisy and. You know, to try and do that, balance that need and demand for environmental controls throughout the facility, but you have covered. It's, uh, it gets dicey.
Right, yeah, so that's, that's for the, the, the parts of the buildings that have air conditioning.
Right.
What about the parts of the building? This is to be a question for all the missus. What about the parts of the buildings that didn't have air conditioning? Probably for last week.
The sec, I'll start, I guess, the second floor of LES is known for, you know, what happens when it gets hot. Uh, we encourage airflow. We've got the big fans pulling cool air from the stairwells down the hallways. Uh, teachers will keep the doors open. We have fans blowing from the hallways into classrooms. Uh, we encourage teachers to utilize different parts of the building if needed. Uh, there's a couple of classrooms downstairs, uh, one classroom in particular that. Has AC, the maker space, uh, which is the old computer lab, has AC. So again, we're encouraging. Classes, so teachers can get creative in terms of utilizing different, different places in the building. It was warm, but I think we got through it. We did have that water issue, we were able to, to get through as well, but, um. I think overall, having been in that building for seven years, um, I think we managed about as well as we could just in terms of. Well, utilizing different parts of the building, just making sure we're keeping a, a close eye on students, you know, outside and inside.
But.
I was gonna say, haven't spent four years in that building, the people get pretty creative, they turn their lights on.
Right, I, I recognize that. The only reason I'm bringing this up, right, I was approached, uh, over the weekend by two different employees of the district. Uh, who said, one of them said their classroom reached eighty-five degrees on Tuesday. The other one told me they were coming home, uh, all week and their undergroundments were still swelled. I watched my own kids, and I can always speak about my family, my kids, right? So I've got two of my family that I love. That are staff up the hill and I got two little ones that I love there up the hill as students, right? And I watched my kids walk in the door, uh, with obvious signs of, uh, dehydration and meat scraps, right? Headaches, you know, they're, they're just cranky miserable. And you know what I'm looking at? I know what I'm seeing. That was my bread and butter for years, right? Even during what I did. Um, and that's what I saw, right? I'm seeing. Those signs that are concerning for me. And I get like, it's the first one or two weeks of the school year. Last one or two weeks of the school year. But we have buildings that. I mean, the, the, the elementary school, not our fault, it's hot. Right? So how can we expect our kids to sit in eighty-five degree classroom and receive high quality, effective material? To learn, be comfortable. I mean, if you think that an average classroom, probably seventy, seventy-two degrees would be pretty comfortable. Would we accept a classroom of fifty-five degrees and we had kids wearing jackets and everything? I, I, I wouldn't be comfortable with that. Fifteen degrees sway out of direction, right? If you get a classroom of seventy degrees, eighty-five degrees, you got kids who are sweating. Kids are drinking as much water as possible, but they're still coming home dehydrated. The adults that are in those classrooms that are sweating through their coat, still coming home dehydrated. But we wouldn't accept it if it was fifty-five degrees. Why should we accept it at eighty-five?
So from, from my seat, um, certainly I think that there were communities that made decisions to call half days.
Right.
Uh, and from my seat, I couldn't see the benefit to doing that, uh, to sending kids home. Uh, to an environment that may be as, as bad if not worse, uh, without attendance by, uh, a trusting adult. Uh, with access to, uh, the ability to get cold water if needed and somebody who can tend to them and the nursing staff, et cetera. So. So that call was on, it was on my desk and I.
I respect that decision.
Yeah.
I want you, or now I respect that.
Right, thank you. I, I'm just saying, i- i- if, if the, if the, the question is, how do we cool the building further? Uh, uh, nothing short of blowing the building up and rebuilding a new, a new building at a, at a huge cost. So I don't. We're not, w- we aren't outfit or prepared to put window, uh, units in, into buildings that the electrical system wouldn't be able to handle it. Um, additional fans can certainly be, uh, could be. Uh, you know, distributed, uh, to, to classrooms and such, but I think we were in a. A, a kind of a lose-lose situation there. So we made the best decision that we could and tried to do the best that we could, given the circumstances. I do wanna thank the, the staff and the students for persevering through that. Um, and certainly it's not our goal to send kids home dehydrated and, and irritable and cranky. Although the irritable and cranky can happen on any given day, right? But, no, but I think it's a fair question.
Is there a temperature that has something?
There is, I don't know what it is for the state of Massachusetts. Temperature can't be more than. Many degrees higher than outside. I would measure twenty to twenty-one.
We also used, uh, we also used outside that day, we also used that you can see. As, uh, guidance in terms of what the center is typically in terms of.
Just like, oh, just like in the middle way.
So our, the nurse was out on the playground for a big chunk of the day. Our staff, we, we kind of meet the goal with those rules, things we work to do. Encourage games in the shade, you know, doing all sorts of things like that and then. Always keeping the option of having recess indoors potentially if needed, uh, if it reached that threshold.
And there's no windows, uh, in the visual, uh, kind of common to the window, you know, there's no quick fix.
I think it's just fru- it's frustrating, right? I mean, y- you wanna. Wanna snap your finger and solve the problem for everybody, right? You wanna, you wanna make the classroom seventy-two degrees and there was is outside. Want your kids to be comfortable when you're trying to learn, whatever it is they're trying to learn, you know? You know, I just, and I think it's frustrating, uh, that there's just no, there's no solution to this. You know, and granted, it, you know, we say it's the first one or two weeks last, one or two weeks in the year. That's our temperature range here in the version, but still, it's, those two weeks is pretty rough.
Our custodians do, uh, try and, they'll, they'll come in and when it's a warm day and cooler morning and they understand the building is. Warmer than outside morning is, they'll actually, they open up every door and we try and clear the building from eight before they come in.
Yeah.
Um, the teams at night are instructed to make sure all windows are closed. They'll draw the blinds. Uh, the daytime custodian on his way out will start to draw blinds and. And keep selling them up there.
We have custodial staff into the evening.
Yes, our operations.
Nobody overnight though, no one, so we can't, no one was open overnight.
No ground level windows, you wouldn't want any open, open overnight. That's a security breach.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions for Dan?
No, not here. No, I'm, I'm on the job for years, but no, we haven't been there.
I, I think that, uh. We would struggle to, to qualify for any, any funding for any substantial project to, um. To service the buildings. Unfortunately, the, the elementary school is only twenty years old. Um, this building is still well. Um, this building is still well short of its life expectancy, so we've got, we'd have a long ways to go, but I think that's, I appreciate the question, I think that's something for us to put on our radar, so that we can, uh, over the next five years or so, begin to explore that.
This building, uh, was one of the electrical commission's two, and that building was built. It's just the mechanicals are the elements in the words, mostly of the two structures here. H P S E mechanical.
Okay. Okay, moving on to committee report, the first is finance committee warrant.
So, that, uh, prior to this meeting, the finance committee, full finance committee, and we discussed a couple of warrants, Mr. Jesmer, or Mr., Mr. Richard has him up. First one's accounts payable, Jesmer.
Sure, so the total for the two warrants, um, since our last meeting is two hundred thirty-four thousand, two hundred fifty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. The first warrant from August sixteenth totaled one hun- one hundred thirty-seven thousand, two hundred ninety-two dollars and twenty-two cents. And the, uh, vendors that made up the majority of that warrant were Converge One, Mountain Holyoke, and Shakespeare and Company. And the second warrant from August thirtieth totaled ninety-six thousand, nine hundred sixty-five dollars and fifty-five cents, and the vendors that made up the majority of that warrant are Amazon, Boys and Girls Club of the Berkshares, and Hillcrest.
Thank you, and the committee did vote to approve this warrant.
So, I will entertain a motion for the accounts payable. I move to accept accounts payable, two hundred thirty-four thousand dollars, two hundred fifty, two hundred thirty-four thousand, two hundred fifty-seven dollars. One second. Any discussion? Brenda, can you do a roll call, please?
Robin?
Yes.
Miss Cooper?
Yes.
Miss Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Langmore?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
The payroll warrant is uh, totaled three hundred forty-five thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollars and sixty-three cents. Now, as you can see, there, there's breakdowns of each of the categories.
Finance committee did vote to approve this payroll.
Okay, I will entertain a motion for the payroll. I move to accept payroll of three hundred forty-five thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollars. One second. Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us, please?
Ms. Robin?
Yes.
Miss Cooper?
Yes.
Miss Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Langmore?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
I'm staying.
And Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, next up, we have no old business, so we're moving right on to new business, and our first thing up is the H U I M grant for L E S finance.
Uh, so, very quickly, this, uh, this agenda item has been brought before both the curriculum subcommittee and the finance subcommittee. Uh, the, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is offering a matching grant for the acquisition of high-quality instructional materials in science. Uh, we are in need of such at grades K to five. Um, the, the, uh, the grant, however, is a matching grant, so I have this before you, uh, in asking you to support, uh, the application for the grant to acquire, um, high-quality instructional materials for grades K to five, uh, and to, to, for the funding source, uh, to come from school choice.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to, uh, to approve the grant and for the funding source to come from school choice. One second. No, you're talking. I'll make, you can say I'll make a motion.
I'll never.
You can say.
I'll make a motion.
What do you have to add? Do you have that, Brenda?
Thank you.
Any discussion? Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Miss Cooper?
Yes.
Miss Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Langmore?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
All right, next up on our agenda is creation of two new revolving accounts.
Well, the, um, L M H S is in need of two new, uh, revolving accounts to support, uh, their new robotics club that Mr. Briganti spoke of, as well as the class of two thousand twenty-seven. Um, these are, uh, these are normal, uh, revolving account, if you would, creations. Uh, the class of two thousand twenty-seven will basically replace at some point, uh, cl- classes who have already graduated that have fallen off, uh, after two years, uh, so we need those accounts in order to, uh, accept fundraising activities and then pay out, uh, payables as they, uh, as they come through for those respective clubs and organizations.
Okay, I will accept the motion to approve, uh, creating an account for the L M H S robotics club. Don't move. We have a second?
Second.
Still move?
The next one.
Any discussion? Brenda, can we have a roll call?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
And Miss Cooper?
Yes.
Miss Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Langmore?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
And then, I will entertain a motion to, uh, a revolving account for the L M H S class of twenty twenty-seven. Still move? Second. Any discussion? Brenda, can you do a roll call, please?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Miss Cooper?
Yes.
Miss Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Langmore?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Okay, and then our last minute change to our new business is that we need to have a motion to change the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar to amend eleven-nine to a half-day.
I make a motion to, uh, amend the calendar, this year's school calendar for November ninth, I have to, I have a second.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us, please?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Miss Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Langmore?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
We're gonna give you a break here for a minute, Brenda. Our next school committee meeting is on October eleventh. Don't book any meetings.
Ten.
Ten, oh, the ten, so, yeah, to make sure you're all paid attention.
Yep.
For, because I was on the eleventh, something before on the top, uh, it's on October tenth. Um, other than that, we got nothing else going on, so if somebody would like to make a motion for adjournment, that'd be super awesome.
I have a motion that we adjourn.
Second, any seconds? Second. Any discussion? Brenda, you ready?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
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 Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Yes.
We are out at seven fifty-eight.